Welcome, everybody. Lawrence is going to be a few minutes late, so I think we can go ahead and get started. We've got a good crowd here. So, thank you all for coming, and thank you, everyone in the audience. If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
And Ms. Ward.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we will move right into business for the review of the George Mason High School RFP. Dr. Nunnan, could I hand it over to you, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you so much for being here tonight on this special session of the school board. It's a very exciting moment, I think, for us in the city schools to have an opportunity to begin really actualizing the work associated with building a new high school to replace George Mason. For those of you that perhaps had a chance to hear some of the presentation last night to the city council, forgive me for my redundancy, but it seemed to sort of help, sort of set the stage, if you will, for the review of the RFP. I would like to say that the board, for the purposes of folks that are in the audience tonight, and perhaps you might be watching, the board did about two weeks ago have an opportunity to review the first draft of the RFP in a closed session, and following that conversation and some further research, the decision was made to bring that out of closed session and bring that work forward into the public for purposes of clarity and transparency and the like. So, tonight, in what I would consider frankly, an unprecedented sort of process here, last night with the city council and this evening with the school board, I'll be asking that you adopt publicly the document that everyone has in front of them, if they so wish, and that is to take it out of closed and look and explore this RFP in the public. So, my hope this evening frankly is to think about the work that we've done, where have we been and where are we now, thinking about some of the highlights of the RFP since the last time you all saw it, some of the changes and modifications that have been made, and next steps. And before I do any of that, I want to thank a couple of people for their extraordinary work. Soon-to-be council member made a comment last night about the quality of the RFP that is out, someone who actually works in the industry, and said, in the few short weeks since the passage of the referendum, this is extraordinary, it's an extraordinary document, and one that is as good as any as he has seen. So, and I want to thank a couple of people for their work on that. The first, I want to thank Bob Jones. Bob from Arcadis has been instrumental in pulling all of this together. I'd like to thank Tricia Minson, who has had the keen legal eye. I would like to thank Marty for helping us get ourselves organized and sorted, and also Lisa Hi, who's here tonight, for her work on this as well. So, let me just begin by giving a little bit of some backstory here, and it's, again, nothing that I don't think any of the school board already knows, but for purposes of the public, to say that where we are now has been a, I haven't been part of this community as long as you all have been talking about this high school. I'm new, obviously, but I'm excited to say that within the time period that I've been here, we've been able to incorporate 10 years of work into this very brief period of time and begin to make some moves going forward. And it's not, certainly not my place or my influence that had that happen. I just think it's been a sort of ball rolling down a hill, and I think that we've gotten to a really great place over the course of the last 10 years, thinking about building a new high school. There has been lots of input over the course of the last decade, particularly in the last several years, around what that high school could look like. There have been multiple visioning sessions with the community. There have been ed specifications that have been bantered about among and discussed among and between school staff, the school board, our community, to the extent that we now have some really excellent ed specifications that drive our instructional program within the high school. And all of this ultimately culminated in a feasibility study that was done recently, showing us that we actually could have a high school built on the site, and also then provide 10 acres of land for economic development to the general government to grow the economy here in the City of Falls Church. So, with all of that sort of as the backdrop, it's very exciting to be here and to be able to talk about the RFP. Before I do that, again, I think for the purposes of the community that may be listening, I do want to briefly discuss the PPEA process, only because I think it's important for folks to know sort of where we are in that PPEA process. As I think most people understand, the PPEA is the Public Private Education Act that was adopted in Virginia several years ago that allowed for public school systems to engage with private industry and private consultants to develop schools and the like. In the RFP process, there are really two phases in the PPEA. And the first phase is the conceptual or the qualification phase, if you will, and the second is really the design phase. Both are important. One is, both are equally important, let me just say that upfront. This first phase is what we would consider in any other process as the RFQ process or the RFI, so the request for qualification or the request for information. Because it's in the PPEA process, it's actually called an RFP, which I think in many occasions will sort of raise the awareness of the community of, oh, the RFP is going out, that means this is done. And I want to be very clear with the board and with the community that in no way does this indicate at all that our work is done. In fact, it's quite the contrary. This first piece is really just about gauging the universe of people that are out there to identify who is capable of doing the work, who has the qualifications to do this work, and who we would then engage further at another point in time to down-select to begin the design process. During that design process, there will be lots of opportunities for the community to engage. We, of course, won't go back through the entire visioning process because so much has been done in the last several years, but we certainly want to engage the community in conversations around, in this school, what should the programming look like in the context of what 21st century looks like, for example. So, I want to just make sure that everybody understands the RFP process in the PPEA really is indicative of two, indicates two phases, and the first is qualifications and the second is the design. This is really a sense of that first phase. So, with that said, I kind of want to talk a little bit about the RFP itself. And again, all of you have had an opportunity to look at this at some great detail over the course of the last several, couple of weeks, but I do want to talk about the draft itself that you're looking at this evening, that we are hoping for adoption. Just to kind of go back and talk about the fact that there's nothing in this RFP that would surprise anybody. If you were to walk out of this room and say, well, in the RFP, it has 800 square feet for an English classroom, that doesn't surprise anybody because we've been talking about that for years, and that's part of the ed specifications. So, there's been a significant amount of input around the school programming from teachers, again, from the city council, from staff, from the school board, and from the community about what the school would look like, to the extent that we actually had that feasibility drawing up there that was put up, that people were pretty excited about, that actually brought us to and through potentially the bond. So, again, nothing to surprise anybody, and in that vein, I want to continue to be an honest and ethical broker of information and discussions with the community, so we're not hiding anything by starting in closed session and bringing it out. Instead, it's just a different strategy, so we're excited to be able to do this in public. So, there are a few highlights that I want to just draw your attention to, and I won't go page by page, line by line. If you want that page by page, line by line, we certainly can do that. We brought Tricia with us, who is well-prepared to go page by page, line by line. But there are a couple of things that I want to make sure you're aware of as you were looking at that, the RFP, and for the public as well. The first is, one of the things you'll see in this RFP is that the classroom design spacing-wise really provides us with the necessary space to be able to educate kids in classrooms. What those classrooms are going to look like when we get to the design phase and get to the actual finish phase is going to look remarkably different than just a box that's 800 square feet, but we know that that box with 800 square feet will give us an opportunity to be able to create spaces that will provide for really high-quality education for our students. What you see in here, again, in terms of sizing and the like, are based on the education specifications that have been previously brought forward and are part of our working process here in the City of Falls Church. Other pieces that you'll see in the RFP are a really great theater and arts program. Our theater will seat between 650 and 700 students. We'll have a really great stage. We will have opportunities for some students to do breakouts and to do small lessons and the like in band and music as well. We have excellent sports facilities that include a competition-sized gym, an auxiliary gym, which is large enough to host a basketball game with an 84-foot court as opposed to a 94-foot court in the main gym, so that also allows for community use, which also was part of our process as we went through this RFP first phase, to make sure that community use was taken into account as we think about that as well. And the last piece that I want to just highlight that has been incorporated since we had our closed session is that we have included as a minimum expectation geothermal, a geothermal system that we would achieve lead gold and that we would be net zero-ready. And what we're asking for the competitors to do in this process is to first educate us further about the lead, the net zero program, and as they compete for our business, figure out ways that they can get us closer to fully net zero, if that indeed, through that education process, indicates significant cost savings to the division. The school is designed for up to 1,500 students with some flexibility in there, and we are looking at, as part of our process also, at the behest of the board, looking for ways to think about design that could further expand if we ever needed to. So, there is a premium to those that are interested in finding ways to help think us through how we might expand in the future. And in there also, in the RFP, you saw what would be considered a level of quality for finishes. So, and I mentioned last night, you know, we aren't going to have the Cadillac of Cadillacs, but we're not going to have a Pinto either. I don't know if a Toyota Camry or a Toyota Avalon rings true to anybody, but that might be sort of where we're headed. So, you'll, so for example, just to give you a sense of what that looks like with respect to the building in terms of level of quality, in the open public areas, we anticipate having Torazo tile, which is a really beautiful poured tile, in the building, and then off to, in the hallways and other places where we would be looking for a vinyl product that would, we wouldn't have Torazo throughout, but we would have it in front and have a vinyl product with 30- to 50-year life to it as well, just in terms of level of quality to give you a sense. So, that, those are some things that I wanted to make sure that I highlighted as you went through. There have been some other adjustments along the way, minor, if you will, but important. We did take into account also some of the information that was shared with us by the firm that did our test fit and did our feasibility study, and looking at ways that we potentially could do some cost reduction. We talked about it here at this table. So, for example, in the RFQ, we have reduced the footprint by five classrooms, one math, science, social studies, and English, and one world language classroom. We have reduced the footprint slightly of the auxiliary gym and PE spaces, and we've also slightly modified the space in the auditorium, down from an auditorium of 750 down to 650 to 700. One of the comments that was raised tonight is, can we look at an ad alternate, for example, to increase the size of the auditorium, and that's something we can certainly look at as we put the finishing touches on before we launch this on the 30th. So, I wanted to make sure that you also knew that we took into consideration some of those places that we've, we sort of agreed here would be reasonable cost savings to us as we move forward. The last piece that I want to talk about before we kind of get into any Q and A that you all may have is our next steps. And so, there are some significant project milestones that we're thinking about that we want to make sure that we hit. And the first is the November 30th date, and that is in two days. We recognize that that's a quick turn, but that being said, we've been working on this diligently. We've been working with the general government side. We've been working with Jim Wise in the procurement office, who believes that we'll be able to turn this around and get this out on the street with a number by the 30th. If that, anything changes with that, we certainly will let you know right away, but we anticipate being able to get this onto the street on the 30th, with a return date in January. From that point forward, we would then down-select to three finalists from the range of folks that have applied, and in February of 18, we would issue then a detailed RFP. And that would be the phase where we start to get into some design. We get to hear from the consultants or the people that would be down-selected to those ideas of information that they have with respect to how they might be able to meet our needs. And then in May, we would, we would have 2019, I'm sorry, let me back up. February 18, we would down-select to three. We would select a finalist in June of 2018, and then we would spend roughly the next year finalizing the school plans. So, between June of 18 and May of 19, we would finalize the school plans and then land on our greatest maximum price as part of our PPEA process, then allowing us to begin breaking ground July of 2019, working through the summer of 2021 and opening in the fall of 2021. There are, again, lots of opportunities for community engagement, and I want to be sure that I'm clear about that. The first is going to be December 13 at 7:30 PM at the Mustang Cafe. We plan to have our first outreach meeting, and that is to share with the community what is in this RFP, in this first qualifications phase, and make sure, again, not go through a revisioning process, but just to make sure that there's nothing glaring that we really have missed, because we have some time between now and in February, if we need to make some adjustments and modifications before we down-select to those three, to make any modifications and adjustments to what's in the RFP. That, by the way, is one of the really important components of the PPEA process, is that it provides us with flexibility to make modifications, adaptations, ask for more information from contractors, and the like. So, it keeps us flexible and nimble in this process. The other outreach, and perhaps the most important one, is the first one, and that is actually going to happen tomorrow with the high school staff. I'll be meeting with the George Mason High School staff after school to share with them also what's in the RFQ. So, we're starting to get some information out and engage the community around at least this first RFP process, but the real, the real community engagement is going to be after we have selected that school design team in 20, in the summer, when we really get into the design phase, but there will be some other opportunities for the community to get some outreach as well. We also had an opportunity to think about how are we going to memorialize the information that is associated with this RFP all the way through the process of breaking ground and opening, and I want to thank John Brett, who is our webmaster and communications guru here. He is setting up a page where we'll be able to host all of the information that you could ever want about this project, and we will load everything in there, from this RFP to when those RFP bids come in, and we do get to a point, we are going to be able to post some of that information as well. We recognize also that in the process, there are going to be some people that are going to have some proprietary information as part of their response to this qualifications phase, so perhaps there may be some redacting of some information, but by and large, most of the information will be public. The information that is redacted will actually go through a vetting process to determine whether or not it really needs to be redacted. So, for example, Mustang red would not be something that would be necessarily proprietary, and we would certainly put that up. So, we will vet what is proprietary and what isn't through the process. So, with that, I sort of share with you the project here. Again, I don't want to go through page by page because you've had a chance to see the first draft. I've called your attention to the main points of the changes. Again, those main points of change are, at first, we did not have geothermal in, we did not have lead gold in, and we did not have net zero in. Those actually were meant to be strategic bargaining chips in this process, but I think that by putting the number that we put on there and creating an all-encompassing look, now that we can do this publicly, I think we're well-positioned, excuse me, to move forward with this RFP. So, Mr. Chair, welcome.
Thank you very much. And that is, and I would ask my colleagues, actually, Ms. Minson and Mr. Jones, if there is anything that I need to, that we need to fill in. That was a lot of talking on my part.
Did it cover everything?
I think we're good.
Peter, just, sorry, Dr. Nunnan, one clarification. The current spec is for lead silver, right, with a opportunity to go to lead gold, not a minimum of lead gold?
You may be looking at a past draft.
No.
The minimum is lead gold?
That's, that change hasn't been made in the document that I received.
Yeah, that's a comment that Cory made as well.
The document that's on Board Docs right now is lead gold throughout. Silver does not, she had also been lead.
Okay, could you please look at the one that's on Board Docs, because that has all of the updates that have, that have been made today?
Okay. Yeah, page 34, at the bottom.
Thank you for that clarification. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I will, we will entertain any questions that you all may have. Before we get to our Q and A part, I'll go ahead and do the public comment portion first, and then we'll jump into Q and A. So, in accord, yes.
On our agenda, doesn't public comment come after? Because I'm thinking, wouldn't the public be informed by our questions?
So, questions.
Thank you. So, Cory Weiss from the ESC forwarded me her questions and her comments that she had sent around this afternoon, and I just wanted to know if we had, it does appear she may have been looking at older documents, since she had also done the strike-through for lead silver and made it just lead gold. So, I just wanted to ask if these are being incorporated, or have they been considered, or what point would they, what's our response to the ESC on these points that came around this afternoon?
I maybe am not familiar with the points that came around this afternoon.
She sent it at 1:49.
To whom?
To Peter C. C. Demarty, several people on the ESC, Tim.
Sorry, it's hard getting stuff on the day of.
No, yeah, no worries. I just, I did, so I, good thing, I just wanted to make sure that we were aware that these comments from the ESC were put forth, because it is possible that she may have been working from an older document, so I'll just to make sure that we've considered their comments and then respond to them.
Sure.
Well, who received older copies of this? Because it was only posted publicly at about 5.
So, thank you for raising this. I don't want to spend too much time talking about this, but I will say that this is one of the consequences of doing things publicly with full transparency, is that if you want transparency, you're going to get work process and you're going to get work products. The reason that the RFP process has typically been done in closed session is that there isn't a version control issue in the community, and those that are going to be responsive are not working from something that's inconsistent with what was meant to be out there publicly. So, there are moments in this process that it really does make sense to do some things enclosed, and this may have been one of them, because what I think we have now is we have a version control issue. So, the version that you received on Board Docs this evening is the version that we are asking you to adopt. Unfortunately, the city council received a different version last night and gave us some feedback, and we were able to incorporate some of the comments from the city council as well into the document. So, I'm sorry to create sort of this version issue, but the version that is out there on Board Docs this evening is the one that we're asking you to adopt.
Is the one that the council guy yesterday, was that public or closed?
That was public. So, the thing, the major things that were changed from last night to tonight were, first of all, there was a, there was an error where we did not include gold, but we included, it was said silver, so that has been changed. And then we incorporated a couple of pieces of feedback that we received from the council last night and into our version from tonight, and Tricia, do you want to sort of comment on what a couple of those were, just to give a sense?
Sure. City council members had mentioned last night in their meeting the importance of having someone involved in the process who could talk about the commercial use and the interaction between commercial use and the school. So, we added at paragraph 9.1.3 that the commercial consultant would also, in addition to advising on the transition space between the commercial development and the George Mason High School, also talk about the compatibility of George Mason High School with the commercial space. We also added language in the design approach at paragraph 9.1.5 about asking everyone who is interested in bidding on this to provide a narrative about the transition between the public and commercial site spaces. That was just one of the issues that the council brought up, where we went back and added language.
And to be clear, we didn't, we weren't able to incorporate all of the comments that were made last night, but we feel like we did do good diligence to the comments that were able, that we were able to weave in. So, I do see the email from Cory Weiss, and we certainly will take a look at these. I'm sorry, I just can't do it on the table.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know you had already looked at them. No problem.
Mr. Reitinger.
Just on one quick point, Ms. Minson, could you raise 9.1.5?
Yes.
I don't think the change was, the lead gold change was completed there, because it still says, "Provide a narrative regarding project opportunities to achieve lead gold certification." Wouldn't you cut that part since it's a minimum now?
Bob, could you talk about that? We had discussed this a few hours ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I think part of the qualifications that we want to hear from them is, there's all different ways you can work to get lead gold, and then you're also incorporating the geothermal and the net zero energy also in. And so, the narrative is more of, give us your approach to, you know, achieving the gold mixed with the geo and net zero, and, you know, it's more of them explaining to us that they understand what all three of those mean, and, you know, their philosophy on how to meet those goals.
Understood. I just, and it's a minor point, but it, since two of those are required and one of them is not, that I find that a little confusing.
Which one wasn't?
The net zero, oh, and ready.
Net zero ready, yes.
Got it. Okay. All right, that's fine. Thank you, Bob.
Other questions? Mr. Lawrence?
Actually, it's a good thing you're up here. At our meeting two weeks ago, you went through a list of, you know, all the expenses up through, including FFNE, to get to, you know, being under the 120. And you had a little cushion, and you had a small contingency, which is probably small enough to make Michael very unhappy, but that didn't include requiring geothermal or gold. What do we have in terms of numbers to show that that can still come in under the 120? Because geothermal, like at Wakefield, for example, I mean, 10 years ago, that cost 10 million. And where did, where do we have?
Yeah, the additional cost for the geothermal for, to do the high school is estimated right around a million, maybe 1.0 million, 1.2 million. And instead of putting, you know how we talked about contingency versus the construction cost, but instead of just adding that right back into the construction cost, we're holding that as part of the school's contingency, so that if, and part of this process during the qualifications is we're going to get feedback from the different firms about the budget. budget versus the scope, so that we can get some feedback to make sure that, you know, what we're asking is, is doable. And, you know, based on some of that feedback, and also, you know, holding that contingency if we need it, you know, to put it back in, in order to get the geothermal. You know, we've got a couple different approaches to try and make sure that the budget's adequate.
Also, just to sort of be clear about the 108 number, because what we've put in is that the requirement of everything that's in this RFP would come in at 108 million. Having lots of conversations with a number of design build firms, and then also running it through our estimator, we are confident in the numbers that we've received from them and from our estimator, that we can get everything we want for 108 million or less. So really, our, our strategy at this point, to be perfectly honest, is not to compete on things, not to compete on geothermal, not to compete on gold, but instead, compete on price. And, and we believe, based on what we've heard from, from those that have expressed interest, that we can get it for, at 108 or less. Right. Right. Now, to get us to 120, that's where we're talking about the additional contingency, we're talking about FFNE, we're talking about the, the fees for construction management, and also talking about the bond costs that are associated with that. So there are some places that down the line, if we, if we are able to get that, get what we want for less than 108, that's an initial savings. Another savings is, if we're really cautious and are careful with the contingency, we may be able to hold some of that contingency back. Our FFNE is a very rich number, at about $4 million in FFNE. I think we can cut some of those costs there. And again, it's not about, my, my desire here, and my goal here, is to get the very best building that we possibly can, that's going to last us 50 years. And the last thing I want to do at all is cut corners on this. But if there are places where we can, we can realize some savings, we definitely want to do that. But the strategy of putting in geothermal, the strategy of putting in lead gold, the strategy of putting in net zero, and making this document public, it took, it took our capacity away to be able to negotiate some of those things in for a lesser price. So instead of negotiating for those items, and looking at getting full net zero, we're now negotiating on, our, our strategy is to have companies compete on price. We, we think we can do it for 108 or less.
Okay, but you're saying the delta is a million to require geothermal. And the only reason I'm asking, because, you know, I think we've all met John Chadwick at Wakefield at one time or another. He put me in contact with a project manager who said that, you know, 10 years ago, for a school that's about a quarter bigger than ours, it cost them 12 million to do the Wakefield geothermal that does everything, heating and cooling. And out of that 12, 10 was, you know, the holes. So it just seems that, you know, 10 years ago, it was, you know, in effect, about 7 million for a school our size, and now we're saying it's really going to be a whole lot less, which I find odd.
We've also had a presentation by COG, Council of Governments, around geothermal, and they actually have come in, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we've also had the Council of Governments come in, who has shared their algorithm for figuring out the cost of geothermal, and they're actually coming in and suggesting that it's less than, less than a million dollars. When we did our, when we did our test fit and our feasibility study, we also received information from Perkins Eastman, that it would be about $1 million to do that field. So the cost of geothermal has come down tremendously from 10 years ago. And, and I think we're all confident that, that we can, we can get the geothermal into our budget at 108.
And I think there is one remaining factor, is we still have to do our test well. And the test well will let you know if it's, if it's feasible, and if it's going to be cost effective to do geothermal. But we have to, you know, we have to do the test well to make the calculations to know for sure. But there's, you know, we plan on having that done before the RFP goes out.
Okay, I'll be willing to be optimistic, but that is a universe away from what this guy said, and he's been working on schools from 10 years ago, for the first one to, you know, fleet that they're working on today, and it just doesn't track. So I'll keep my fingers crossed.
Other questions? Mr. X. D. O.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Noonan, could you explain a little bit more? I've occasionally read things in the community about cost overruns and price escalations. Could you explain a little bit more what the GMP concept is, and what, what it provides us with respect to cost escalation insurance?
Let me, I'm actually going to ask Mr. Jones to help us on that, but let me, before we do that, let me also say to you that, and to the public, that part of the qualification process is we are asking for, and this sort of gets to some of the conversation, I think, we are asking the design build firms that are interested in being qualified to provide us with a number of projects that they've been a part of, that includes some real numbers of, you know, what was your budget? How much did you come in at? Was it on budget, under budget, by how much? And so there are some calculations in there, because we also want to make sure that we're not hiring someone that has a track record or a record of going over. So, so one of the guardrails, if you will, around cost overruns is looking at some of the history of these companies. But the GMP in particular, I'll ask Mr. Jones to talk a little bit about.
So it's, the cost will be, you know, it's, it's two parts. When they submit their proposals, they'll give us what their construction cost limit, which means that's the maximum price that they can charge to do the entire scope of work contained in the RFP. So we start off with construction cost limit, you know what the upper limit's going to be. Once they develop the design and they get to 65% documents, then they'll go out and actually bid it out to subcontractors. And there's requirements that, you know, it's at least three, and, you know, they'll come back with all the bids from the subcontractors and put together their guaranteed maximum price. That GMP can be less than the original cost limit, but it can't be more. Whatever happens, they're locked into providing the school for that upper limit. And so the, the GMP becomes what we, you know, work off of until the end, and through construction, that becomes the cost for the project. Since it is design build, the owner isn't responsible for errors and omissions and the normal, a lot of the normal change orders that would arise during a construction project. The only exposure would be actual owner changes and unforeseen conditions. And to try and avoid some of those unforeseen conditions, the RFP does state that they need to plan on using deep foundations because of the soil conditions that, you know, are over at the high, may exist at the high school site. So in that, we're trying to, you know, avoid any, some of these unforeseen conditions that are more than likely going to happen.
Can you also talk about the incentive for not going into cost overruns as part of the GMP for both the contractor and for the owner?
Oh, yeah, and also, what we're aware of is the shared savings. So the, you know, the, the contractor's going to have to have some type of contingency for himself to cover his E and Os as he goes along. And then also during the whole design, there's, we're open for, you know, value engineering suggestions. We work as a team to look for ways to reduce costs while still providing the program and quality that we're asking for. And at the end of the project, you know, we're both incentivized to reduce costs with the, the shared savings, which is generally 75% to the owner, 25% to the contractor.
So just to be clear, does the GMP, so the only way that you can go over the GMP is if there are unforeseen conditions or we make a change? But as a, barring those, GMP means we won't be paying more than that?
Guaranteed maximum price.
So it should, that, the cost overruns under the PPA are managed in a way that substantially reduces exposure?
Yeah, one of the, one of the best things is you know what your cost is going in, barring those two, owner changes and unforeseen conditions, yes.
And that is not available in the design bid build process. That's another sort of nice example of why a PPEA is useful to schools, because there are some potential savings and, and the collaborative process.
And it's, you know, just to go back to how you actually verify that, everything is open book. So all the subcontractors, all the general conditions that he actually spends, everything is open book and tracked, and, you know, so you know what's left over when he's done.
Just as a follow on, just with respect to PPEA, I think one of the things that I, that was mentioned last night, that I think is worth mentioning tonight, is there, I think there is a sentiment perhaps in the community that the PPA process has been unsuccessful. And I would like to just sort of publicly push back just a little bit against that, to say, the Mary Ellen Henderson project was a PPEA, Jesse Thackeray was a PPEA, the first edition at Mount Daniel was PPEA, and the Thomas Jefferson edition were PPEA. And all four of those were very successful. We are back underway at Mount Daniel now, but I don't believe that it was the PPA process necessarily that, that slowed that project down. So I just want to make sure that, that you all, as well as the community, know that the PPEA process, while maybe has a bad name, actually has been very successful in the City of Falls Church.
Couple more? So, could you just explain a little bit for the community and the board's benefit? What is going to be the deliverable that results from this initial process? Because, you know, it talks about, for example, it appears to invite some kind of proposal for a high school, and it talks about preferences for various things. What are, what we're qualifying, what are we going to get in hand, and what are we going to be looking at?
Yeah, the, the reason that all the detail and scope and all those items in there is to give the proposers an understanding what the project is, and to get them thinking of it upfront.
When they go to the detailed phase.
When they go to the detailed phase, but, you know, it allows them to understand the project that they're going after upfront, and I think it, it peaks and brings in more interest, and shows that you're serious and you understand what you want upfront, and it just makes the responses better. But with this first conceptual RFP is basically the teams are competing on their qualifications, and they're competing on who's the best team, who are the three best teams that we want to move forward with the project. So they'll be submitting, you know, the dip pass projects, we ask for, you know, their philosophy about high schools, and what do, what do they think innovative design of a high school looks like, and provide examples of how they've done it before. And then, you know, the contractor's success in delivering similar projects. So we're looking for the three best teams to actually move on and move on to the design and cost part in the detailed phase.
Okay. Is there, can the RFP requirements or criteria change after this goes out the door?
Yes, they can. I think that's another example of a positive piece around the PPEA process, is that if there are changes that need to be made, we can communicate those with, with those folks that are interested in, in coming forward.
I don't want to take, I, could I just get through?
Someone else has?
So let's say we can get everything we want for 121 million dollars. Can we ask for supplemental appropriations? Are we, are we locked into 120? I'm, I'm just trying to, just trying to figure out how constraining 120 is.
I, I think, I think 120 is constraining. I think it's a good amount of money, and I, and I believe, based on the information that we've received, that we can get the program that we've outlined here for 108 or less.
Ms. Rain Kuma asked me to ask that question.
I know the answer to that.
Not everybody does.
Okay. So I guess, another question. Does it really take a year after going through all this to design a school?
Typically, it does, yes. That's, that's not unusual.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and part of it, to be perfectly frank, is to make sure that we, we do it right.
How to design a bad school quicker?
True.
We could take one, and you know what? We have a very unique site. I mean, the truth of it is, is we have a very unique site. And, and so there are some schools that have been built, and, you know, if you were to cruise the room at VSBA, for example, and listen to all the design build companies that are down there trying to win your, win your favor, which a lot of them do when they know you have 120 million dollars in the bank, they will say, we have, we have products that we can deliver quickly, because they're, they're essentially cookie cutter type buildings, and we know what to do. We can put it in, we can do it quickly, and, and our site is unique, and, and there isn't a way to do that quickly. We need to, we need to really be thoughtful about the site. We know that it's a unique site from the soil perspective. We also know that with the combination of the school and having commercial next to it, it's going to be unique as well. So it's a long way of saying, yes, we need that year for design.
And going forward, could you talk a little bit about roles and responsibilities? I'm a lawyer, and I looked at the Virginia Code, and under the Virginia Code, the school board's responsibility is for the construction and maintenance of school buildings, 20, section of Virginia Code, 22 dot 1 dash 79 point 3. Going forward, how do, how do we work this with our colleagues on the council? What are the, what's the process? How are the bodies going to interact? And, and, and I guess a related question is, how is we, can a board help you going forward?
Yeah. It's a good question, and I think it's one that we need to pay very close attention to, because as you noted, your authority to build this building comes from Virginia Code. The council doesn't have that same authority. So my intention, as your CEO, if you will, of the school division, is to ensure that we have a collaborative working relationship with the city council and with the city manager to continually share information with them, and garner their, their feedback. But at the end of the day, where we can incorporate that feedback appropriately, we will. But, but it is our responsibility as a collective to get this building built. So, so where can you all help me? And, and just by the way, in terms of sort of getting back to your question, the, the structure, if you will, of roles and responsibilities is that Mr. Shields has sort of a development team, if you will, that's going to work on the economic development piece. I have a team that's going to be working on the school piece. Some of the members of that team are here. And then what we had talked about was having a joint team that would include a couple of school board members, a couple of city council members, and some others to, to bounce ideas off of, that can sort of serve as a committee that can help us clear the decks, if you will, if there are issues to sort of work through carefully. We would then go back to our respective teams. We would, we would, as the school side, take on the school structures, take on the school property and the building of the school, and Mr. Shields would go forward with taking care of the economic development piece. I would, I would say one, one area that I perhaps would ask for your help in is being cautious about the number of layers associated with oversight of this project. I think that there's the potential for enough layers to be inhibiting in, in a way that could create problems for us in terms of our nimbleness to be able to make the appropriate changes, modifications, and the like, to be able to move forward with this school building. And I'll be real explicit with what I'm saying. I, I have some generalized concerns about a high level executive that oversees both the school project and the economic development project. I think that that creates a layer of structure that can become problematic for us when it's our duty, as indicated by the code of Virginia, to get this building built. And I wouldn't want it to get hung up in some sort of bureaucratic process with, with an over, oversight executive. So you hired me to, to come here, and I think part of the reason you hired me is because I've done this before. And, and I'm, I'm excited about it, and I, and I don't mean to say that to be at all arrogant, at all. I'm excited about this project, and I'm excited to get this done, and I will, and I will do it in a way that's colla- do it in a way that's collaborative and, and in the spirit of openness and fairness. But at the end of the day, it's your responsibility to get this building built, and I wouldn't want to put any structures in place that would in any way inhibit your capacity to be able to do that.
Well, and I guess just as one, one request going forward with this process that we're having, if the board members can get all the inputs that, that are coming to you for changes to the RFP, I think it would be appropriate for the full board to receive those so we know what's, what's happening with the document.
Be happy to share those with you.
All right, thank you.
I'm, to, to every level? So for example, if we, if we change a food services director office from 50 square feet to 250 square feet, do you want to know that change?
Absolutely not. But, you know, with respect to what Ms. Gill was talking about, it's great to get input, but it's important to know what that input is.
The impact of that input.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rain Coma?
Listen, Dr. Dunleavy, could you, I'm sort of curious about what you just talked about, the oversight, sort of. What, what could we expect? And I know what you, you, you're, you're used to, what you, you would prefer, but what could we expect in terms of, from what you told us? Should there be, are there additional layers of oversight, the school board, city council, joint committees, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I, I think what, what has worked in the past here in the city of Falls Church for Mary Ellen Henderson, for example, that came in on time and under budget, was the joint approach where, where, what I explained, where Wyatt has, the city manager has a team, and superintendent has a team, and then there's a joint committee that meets to sort of work through whatever issues may occur. The experiences that I've had are, are similar to that, but less, I'll just share with you, my, my experience is there was much less communication with the city council in school projects, or the, the county board supervisors in school projects than what, than is expected here by, by the city council. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't give them information, because I do think we should give them information. I think it's extraordinarily important to make sure that we're all singing from the same sheet of music. I, I think, I think at the end of the day, it's just important to recognize that, you know, it's your responsibility to get this building done. So, so I, I actually think that the structure of having the, the two teams with one in the middle that, that collaborate and cross purpose actually would be a really great way to operate, and I, I would support that, and that's what Mr. Shields and I have presented.
So, yeah, I, and this is probably directed more to Mr. Jones. So we all know that I was disappointed in the, in the taking away 200 parking spots. And we are, you know, in addition to having our regular activities at the high school, and I've been attending them for years, there's never enough parking up there to accommodate all the activities that go on. And then we're also pushing to make this high school a community center for the community to use. My question is, since we're cutting out 200 parking spots, is there going to be an alternative arrangement for parking to accommodate the events that will be going on at the high school?
I know you directed it at Mr. Jones, but...
Both of you.
If you want to start, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the, you know, there, there was talk about, you know, maybe the, you know, developer working with, you know, surrounding properties and that sort of thing. But the, the problem you get to is that they can't make any kind of deal. So, you know, as far as our project, you know, what we've, we've put in there is we want 300 parking spaces, so they're going to give us 300 parking spaces. If we want to come up to an arrangement for, with neighboring properties, I think it's, you know, we need to work with the, the city and actually engage them to come up with these, these alternate agreements. I think, is that where you were trying to go with having the developer work on it?
My concern is, I, I just, the last few years, my son's attending George Mason, and I've been up there for various things, like plays and lacrosse games and baseball games, and every single time, there was something else going on at the same time. That's generally what happens at a high school, is usually more than one event that, that occurs. And in addition to that, we're making this, we're trying to make our new high school a community center, which is a great thing, but there are going to be several events occurring at the same time, on the same, on the same nights, and with 500 parking spots, it was hard to find a parking space. Now, we're going to have 300, we're going to have more students and more activities at the high school, and my concern is where's everybody going to park? And I know there's talk about walking and that kind of thing, but when you're talking wintertime and people are bringing their small children, people aren't going to walk from, you know, Broadmont up to the high school, they're just not. And so my concern is, we're going to have all these great things occurring at the high school, but where are people going to park? That's what I want to know.
So I...
I want to know what, what are we going to do about that?
So I think we're a million miles ahead in that, in that question, because really what, what we're trying to do is just get qualifications at this phase. If this is something, though, that is important to sort of continue to look at when we do down select the three, we certainly can talk with those design build firms. I do think, and, and this is just, this is just me, sort of as your, as your person here, what we're looking at is the rise, the, the current fifth graders being the freshman class at the high school. That gives us several years to begin establishing and building a culture that is different than perhaps what we are experiencing now, from a variety of perspectives. It's not just transportation, it's also schooling and what schooling looks like in the 21st century, the flexibility of spaces, thinking about hybrid solutions to school, thinking about different careers and career pathways that don't even exist yet. So I think that we have an opportunity to sort of revision in some ways what, what it might look like. So just in early conversations as an example, one of the things that Mr. Hills and I have talked about is if, if we did end up having to limit parking, and again, sort of way into the, into the deep here, but some things to consider might be putting a premium on carpooling, putting a premium on riding the bus, putting a premium on, on walking buses, or, 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 or. I think there's a lot of things that we can sort of begin to explore to find, one, safe routes to school, and, and two, figure out ways to look at transportation that is more consistent with a semi-urban community, which we, which we are living in. So I hear your concern, and it's something that I think will sort of keep it, even when you're not with us, keep it at, at the forefront.
This is sound.
As part of this point.
No, no, I...
Parking emeritus.
All right. Well, I just, that is, has been a concern of mine, and I don't doubt that you all have something in mind, and that's what, I just wanted to know what you were thinking for the future, anywhere this is years off.
Sorry. No, we've begun to also engage in conversations about sharing space with Virginia Tech, University of Virginia. We've, we've explored, we will explore down the line, what, what is the, what is the parking going to look like for the economic development side of the house? Is there a way that, you know, if they're going to do structured parking, is there a way we can work something out with them to perhaps leverage their, their parking? So there's a lot of opportunity here, but it's, again, I just think it's a little, little premature, but we certainly will keep that in mind.
Thank you.
You have other questions?
Just a request for everyone who's on this board going forward, and everybody who's going to be on this board way too soon. The, the public process is fantastic, but honestly, before I found out that the council had made this document public last night, I was going to come here and ask that we wait another week or vote against it, because frankly, putting out a 300-page document even 24 hours ahead of a vote is, is honestly not asking for public input. So I would just say, going forward, don't do that again. I mean, if you really want public input, give them time to, to look at something, to read it, you know? Somebody like Cory will, you know, take the time during the day, during a weekday, to do it, but, you know, other people don't have that luxury, and it just looks like you're not looking for public input when in fact you want it. So just...
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, and it wasn't at all meant to be late, it just was when the decision was made to move it from the, the closed session, private process into the public, you know, making sure that it was right. I, I hear your concern, and there was never an, we never anticipated it to be this late, but again, making sure that we got it right was more important, I think, in many ways.
Oh, yeah, and you're right, not, not much in here is new, but, you know, the, the next steps will be more real.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And there'll be lots of opportunity for community engagement and input, and I look forward to that.
And I was just, wanted to add that a lot of the idea was once, you know, this RFP comes out for the qualifications, and it includes all the scope of the project, we have from now until the detailed RFP comes out for the community input on, on that document, and, you know, so that there's time to make any revisions that we want before the detailed RFP goes out. So it's that two-month period of where we can get public input on this document still.
Yeah, no, I just think that needs to be explained, because it feels like, you know, Monday night, 300 pages drops, Tuesday night, it gets voted on, and then it's gone. Doesn't feel like input is wanted, even though there is an ability to change it going forward to when you get to the real process. So it's just, I'm just saying, perception...
I, I guess the reality of the circumstance was you need a document to be able to get feedback on, and, and the intention was never for this document to be public, because we, again, wanted it, wanted it to be right, and then have the community give us feedback after that, after it went out. But I think the pressure to, to put this out early has, has created some, some heartache probably, unfortunately, because that wasn't at all meant to be. So I, I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of things, just so respond to a few things that have been discussed. My personal view is that we do need to treat 120 million as an extremely hard cap. You know, we went out, we asked for 120 million bond, and I'd like to bring in under 120 million if we can, but that depends on what the, you know, what the value engineering we can do. I know value engineering is a dirty word with some people, and Ms. Carney will probably kill me just for raising it, but I'm not talking about, as you said, Mr. Superintendent, cutting corners that make the building, not a 50-year building that we all would be proud of, but, you know, additional realistic things that may come out of the entire process that allow us to save money. So I, I think that's a very important thing. The second thing, I did look at the, I read this afternoon, the, the letter from Ms. Firestone, and I think we've probably addressed that to the extent we can, as you pointed out. Right now, this is really just a document that says, are you qualified to bid on the RFP? And here's a sense of what the big project looks like, but it's just a sense of what the big project looks like, and, you know, the, the nooks and crannies of what will be built can change, even before we issued that document in February. The one thing that I think is sort of in conflict with Ms. Firestone's letters, she had asked in the letter that the building include, be, be, not net zero ready, but be net zero. And I think we're saying in this RFP that the baseline is net zero ready, with, as you discussed, a narrative to go farther. And, I mean, that at least feels to me like the, I would personally prefer that the building be net zero, but I don't know what the cost implications of all of that are, and, go ahead.
No, I just, thank you for bringing that up. I, I did want to spend just a second talking about it. I think, one is, there's, there's some further education, I think, that's needed, at least on my part, about the value of net zero and, and what the overall long-term reductions in cost would be operationally to the schools. But, but more importantly, one of the things that we do know is that the premium right up front that you pay for that net zero is somewhere in the neighborhood of...
It brings us from 10 to 15%.
10 to 15% additional on the project. So, but, but we also recognize that if, if we wanted to walk that road, there are, there are opportunities for grants and the like to try to figure out how to crack that nut. So really, to be perfectly honest, if, if net zero indeed is something that we want to get to, that's another place for these companies to be able to compete for our business, is to talk to us about how they could potentially get us to net zero. So thanks for...
To turn briefly to the comments by Mr. Lawrence, it, it is, I agree, unfortunate this came out so late, but I'm actually glad it's out, and it, I, I understand there can be a perception issue, but it doesn't overly trouble me, because we can get around the perception, and it is just a perception issue. This, all that's being asked for here is for people to turn their qualifications in and show what sort of work they've done in this space, so the decisions can be made in the detailed RFP. So there'll be lots of opportunity. Let's just make sure as we go forward, as I think Mr. Lawrence suggested, that we get documents out really early. And I think we do, in the request for a detailed RFP, need to be very cautious, not cautious, but we have to lean forward on ensuring things are as public as possible, because I think the, I think the distaste of the PPEA, as you suggested, or with the PPEA, is not around the statute, but around the joint campus economic development project in particular, and how it was applied, and how people felt that, like that was taking place behind closed doors. And so people see the PPA as a non-transparent process, and we've got to make sure it is a transparent process. The last thing, I did review this before and sent in some comments on the draft, I think they are, to Mr. Castillo's point, all sort of happy to glad, don't use the word within here, so I don't think we need to go through those. The one I did want to just raise is, given the desire to keep the costs low, and I know we reduced the size of the auditorium to be able to get down to 108 million, does it make sense to, and this could even be discussed around the next phase of the RFP, does it make sense or not make sense to include an ad alternative for a larger auditorium? I read, we've received a letter on that, I know. I was privileged to attend the, sorry, the, the George Mason's Spamalot production a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, it was, it was, it was, I would say, without leaning, without exaggerating too much, Broadway quality. The, the performances I saw were, in many cases, much better than those by the original Monty Python group when they did the Holy Grail movie. If you didn't get a chance to see it...
Not sure how high that bar is, sir, but...
There are people I expect to pay to see in commercial productions in the future. It was just awesome, and it was packed. It was packed every night. I think one night, they had like three or four seats left. And it does feel to me like that's a valuable community thing, and so I just wanted to raise the question about whether we wanted to include an ad alternate for a larger auditorium, because, you know, I don't know what builders can do or not do.
Well, unless there's objection, I, I think we can add that as an ad alternate to potentially look at, look at doing that.
Well, I, I would just, I would just raise, you know, maybe we do a fourth show, maybe do a matinee on Sunday. You know, that, I think you have to ask hard questions. It's like, do you build a telephone network for Mother's Day? And maybe you do, but that's going to be expensive, and those auditoriums are expensive, and how, if there's a way we can monetize it and get usage for it so it would pay for itself, that's great.
We certainly, I, I think in, in this initial phase, the one, the one risk that we, we have by adding to the process is that we, we end up out, out asking, if you will. I think we can, we can certainly, we, we have cut some other space, some, in other places, so we, I don't think that that's a heavy lift for us to, to add that as an alternate. I, I don't disagree, just by the way, I saw Spamalot on Saturday. The Saturday show was great, it was completely sold out. So I, I think we can add it.
Wait, what's 100 seats cost?
Thousand square feet, 3.5 million, top of my head.
Is that contingency?
Well, I think if we add it as an alternate, or we could ask them to price it separately, essentially, so we could, we could see.
I, I think that's, more information is good.
Yeah. I wanted Trish, if, if she wouldn't mind, talking about the... I wanted Trish, if she wouldn't mind, talking about the transparency aspect of the PPEA, because I want to make sure that you, as a board and the community, know sort of what the process is. So would you mind?
Sure. The board adopted in July of 2015 Falls Church City Public Schools Guidelines for Implementation of the PPEA, and that's a document that is expressly referenced in the Request for Qualifications or Request for Proposals. It's also going to be up on the website that we have that's devoted to this project. But on the section five, where it talks about solicited proposals or bids, which is what this is, there's a section that talks about those proposals all being made public, except for the proprietary information or information that would otherwise be exempt under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, at least one copy of each of the proposals that are received will be made available for public inspection. Everyone who's submitting a proposal is submitting it electronically and in paper hard copy. The electronic versions are going to be going up on both the city's website and on our school's website, minus the proprietary information that is explicitly stated to be withheld. And there is a process within the PPEA for the superintendent to go back to the bidders and say, what makes this proprietary? Or we'd like you to reconsider that being proprietary information. The information that we're requesting at this stage of the proposal is asked for in two volumes. The second volume is the financial information about the companies, so that would be withheld. But the first volume of material that's being provided, virtually all of that, except for whatever is being marked as proprietary information or would otherwise be exempt under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, will be made available to the public electronically and in hard copy format for folks to come in and see what, what has been responded to. The school board also will receive comments from the public on these proposals, and there's a period of 30 days where we need to get those comments before we go any further. So that's explicitly outlined in the guidelines that this board adopted in 2015 of how we are going to work with the PPEA process.
Well, I would just say, and the joint PPEA followed those guidelines. And one of the things that the community has to understand is there's a trade-off. As Dr. Noonan has said repeatedly, we're looking to get competition to get the price and the features we want. And if it's public as to one, it's public as to everybody else, and all of a sudden, there goes your leverage. So I think it's very important to understand, there's a reason why there's the proprietary exception. That exception will be doggedly held on to by the bidders, in my experience, and we saw that before with the PPA public submissions. And there, there was a lot more that wasn't produced than was. But there's, again, there's a reason for that. That will enable us to get the best bids and the best product. And so I think that's an important thing for the community to understand, that this isn't being done for no good reason. It's all in the name of getting the highest quality at the lowest price for our community. And the same held true for the prior joint project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would think that the firms would also request that their project approach and design approach are kept confidential, because that's something they wouldn't want another proposal, proposer to know until the process is over. And I think a lot of it with the joint is, so much of the initial proposals were that type of information that you couldn't make it public without jeopardizing each of the proposer's position.
Yeah, I just think that this goes to public procurement being complicated and the need for us to be as, as honest and as ethical as we are in everything that we do, and hope that we've built enough trust with the community to understand that. So I think that it's going to take some time, and hopefully, we can, we can do a good job with that. Mr. Kuma.
So, just to be clear, the 2015, what I remember vaguely, and correct me if I'm wrong, was, at the time we got the last PPEA, our approach to responding to it was sort of outdated, and we were, we, when we got that unsolicited proposal, we had to sort of backtrack or defer the way we were, there was something, and I'm not a lawyer, so these things will come easily to me, but we were supposed to go and change or amend our response to PPEAs to match what had been presented. Is that what we did in 15?
I'm not sure the history of what we did in 15. There is a different process under the PPA that we adopted for unsolicited and solicited proposals.
But this was after we received that unsolicited proposal.
Is that right with the time?
I think so. I think what happened was, before we did the revised one, after the unsolicited was rejected, one of the things that we did as part of that process was to get our PPEA guidelines up to, up to current standard.
In case there was ever that unsolicited one to come again, because we didn't have anything in place to address that.
But the, the new guidelines, as you referred to, cover both solicited and unsolicited?
Yes.
Okay, so at least we're...
So we're good.
We're good, okay. That's all I wanted to do, confirm.
Any other questions or comments?
Real quick with me, just touch base on some of the comments that have been made already this evening. Just reiterating again that we have every intentions of having this project as much as it, public and shared with the community as possible, where it will not affect our negotiating position, because we are, in my mind, as well as others, hard capped at the 120. So wherever we can potentially have cost savings, we're going to work to try to do that, and hopefully, where some of that negotiating behind the scenes will get us to that. I look forward to working with our partners, with the general government. But again, as Mr. Castillo and Dr. Noonan both alluded to, at really the end of the day, it's a project that we have to manage. But what we will be good stewards of is sharing that information with them, because there are aspects of the project, because of the uniqueness of it, of the commercial, right next to a school, that there is a uniqueness to it, that I think we, and that kind of centralized committee in the middle, will definitely be useful of addressing those joint concerns. But really, it's our project, making sure that we continue to consult and counsel the city council with the information, so that they are in the loop, that we all are on the same page as we do this project. And the other evening, I believe it was Councilman Snyder that said, vice versa, that the commercial development project is theirs to do the overall managing of, but include us in some of the decision-making there that would involve us, again, by being right next to a school. I think this project, because of the nature of it trying to become public and the timing, yeah, there were some bumps along the way, and it is, future hopes that we'll get that information out sooner. But in the way of being transparent, there's going to be times that that information is going to be put out there, and it's going to be continued, being worked on and adjusted as it moves forward. So I would ask the public and the public to recognize that, that in the eyes of being transparent, that there, sometimes there are going to be some adjustments to documents as we move along, because we're trying to make sure that the public is involved in that process of seeing what the work that's being done, of what can be shared with them. But I do also want to thank Dr. Noonan and the team for the work they did in a, in a, having started the work, at least being ready to go, depending on how the referendum turned out, and getting us to this point. There will be, again, many opportunities as we move forward for comment from the public, getting your feedback and input as we move forward. This is just the beginning phase of this, just to get qualifications of folks who can do this project. But there definitely will be many opportunities for, for continued information gathering from, from everyone as we move forward this project, as it is a big one for the community overall, that's going to have long, long-term implication for, for us in the future. So I thank you. And any, are there any additional comments or questions before we take the, do public comment?
It just says one, it just occurred to me, we've got a large site that will vacate. Could we expand the geothermal field to include the development land for the school's use? Could we get the, the sort of, not the mineral rights, but the geothermal rights? Or will there be, would that be better deployed for the buildings that go on that site?
I believe currently, you're not allowed to put geothermal under structures, so they want to be able to build on top of that, and it would make it very difficult to build on, to come back later and try to build on top of a field.
Okay.
But the, any of the fields around the school were, you know, prime candidates for the geothermal.
All right, we'll move on to public comment. In accordance with school board bylaws 2.3, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board, members for the record, and deposition of requests. And our first speaker will be Chris McLeod.
So I'm Chris McLeod, E24 Villa Ridge Road. I've been a resident of the city for 14 years now. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Noonan, and members of the board, I'd like to rise today in support of the inclusion of the net zero provision in the RFQ and later the RFP for the new high school. A net zero school would offer the lowest life cycle costs to our community, offer additional learning opportunities to the future generations of our community, and be a source of pride for both the community and the kids who attend it. It would also offer a healthier environment. Arlington has also shown with its Discovery School that such projects can come in on time and, on time and under budget. Many school districts in the area have announced their intention to follow Arlington's lead, but Falls Church really has an opportunity here to be at the forefront of this movement and show itself to be a leader in the region on this front. I've personally experienced the benefits that come with a green school. The Environmental Science Building on the campus at the University of Vermont, where I attended, was lead platinum. It had far better ventilation and lighting than conventional buildings, and some of the lowest carbon dioxide concentrations in the campus classrooms. High carbon dioxide concentrations are correlated with lower oxygen intake and difficulties staying awake and focusing in classes. It was far easier to focus in the classes in that building than it was in the conventional ones on campus. It also offered additional learning opportunities, computers that tracked energy and heating consumption and compared them to a comparable building not built to the same standards. Along with the Davis Center, the first lead gold student union in the country, it was a source of immense pride on campus. Arlington has noticed a similar effect among the students at Discovery. They're excited to go there, and they really want to spend every minute there. During a recent ESC hearing that I sit on, one panel member testified that students have opted to return to school for as few as 30 minutes at the end of the day, just to have the full school day experience there if they've had to leave early for appointments. Let's give our future generations and their teachers here in Falls Church the opportunity to share in that pride. In a 21st century learning environment, the building itself can provide far better than a conventional building in which to study and advance their skills. The schools are the heart of our community and a reflection of our community values. Do we not value an environment that our future generations can be healthy in, take pride in, and truly bring out the best of their abilities and set them up for the most success possible? I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Noonan for his support on this issue, and each of the members of the board who voiced that support as well this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Mr. McLeod. The next speaker is John Ward.
My name's John Ward, resident of the city since about 2001. I live at 335 Riley Street. My comments this evening were going to be on the topic of the geothermal ground source heat pumps. I'd like to, I think I'm going to add lib, a little bit away from my prepared comments, back to what was discussed early on. I think what I observed from the peanut gallery was, I think, Dr. Noonan and Mr. Jones, when they're talking about the million dollars or less, was talking about an incremental cost between conventional and the heat pump system, whereas I think Mr. Lawrence might have been looking at the 10, the large number as the full cost for the heat pump system. So if that was where some of the confusion may have come in, I just wanted to raise, I think I might have seen that there. So, first of all, I'm, go back to my prepared comments, so thank you. I was glad to hear that the vision for the RFP will include very low net energy consumption or even net zero, if that is achievable. I think it will put the city in a strong position to seek similar features from commercial developers, since the city and the school system will then had firsthand experience regarding the costs and the potential benefits of these, of such designs. So I want to express my appreciation to the members of the school board and then superintendent and the staff for, for adopting that vision. As you know, ground source heat pumps or geothermals, they've been termed here, for heating and air conditioning, have been analyzed in some of the feasibility studies for the Mason site. Those studies have suggested that the incrementally higher upfront costs would pay for itself in the first six to nine, sorry, six to nine years. Since we're talking about long-term bonds at interest rates around 5%, and the school and equipment lasting for decades, investments in these types of energy-efficient features can result in lower operating costs and lower net costs over the life of the, of the, life of the school. And by net costs, I mean the extra interest on the extra capital minus the, offset by the savings in operating costs. Money that can then be put towards teacher salaries, lowering the tax rate, all kinds of good things we'd want to do in the city. With that said, I'm here to encourage the decision-makers to prioritize these sort of, these electric heat pumps in the design process and in the selection of the potential bidders. The reason for that, Falls Church, like many other DC area jurisdictions, has quantified a goal of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions citywide by 80% by the year 2050. That's about 30 years into the life of the school. Electrification is key to meeting these goals, so that we can eventually use zero-carbon power sources like wind, solar, and nuclear. Failure to choose heat pumps and instead using conventional natural gas, whether it's for municipal, commercial, or residential applications, locks us into decades of additional fossil fuel burning and CO2 emissions, which will make it harder for the city to meet its goals, the state to meet its goals, as well as the country. So, that said, thank you again for taking the long view in your vision for the RFP and the new school, and thank you for your time this evening.
The next speaker is Andrew Crawford.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Noonan and school staff. My name is Andy Crawford. I live at 230 Kent Street. I'm a member of the Environmental Services Council and a parent of two TJ Elementary School students. I want to add my thanks to all of you for your support so far of the concept of a net zero-ready environmentally sustainable design for the new high school project. You've heard a bit about the energy, environmental, and financial benefits of a zero-energy sustainable school design. I'd like to highlight one other set of benefits. Quite simply, a green school will also be great for our kids. So I'd like to underline briefly the health and learning benefits of a green school. Sustainably designed schools benefit student and teacher health and student learning outcomes due to improved air quality, lighting, acoustics, comfort, and access to nature. As just one example, a sustainable design can help reduce CO2 levels in classrooms, which helps to improve cognitive performance. Some research indicates that students in better-ventilated classrooms score 14% to 15% better on standardized tests. Sustainable design can also be integrated into the school's curriculum to improve students' environmental and sustainability literacy and support STEAM learning. Indeed, Discovery Elementary School in Arlington, of which some of you probably are familiar, uses an energy usage dashboard that allows students to take an active and engaged role in learning from their school environment. I would also urge you to apply sustainability concepts on the broader, broader side. Sustainable landscaping, tree canopy, and access to green space are also important elements in the overall design of a green school as a healthy and successful learning environment, and are worth factoring in as you move forward with the RFQ and RFP process. And as a final benefit, the school will obviously be an important expression of our community's values and priorities, and environmental stewardship is a wonderful lesson for our kids to learn. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ms. Shawna Russell.
What's Phil smiling before? Hi, my name is Shawna Russell. I'm at 609 Poplar Drive. I'm not with the ESC, but I did want to start out my comments by just supporting the email that Corey Firestone sent earlier today and specifically the part where she puts in the, you can look at the email, but when she talks about the preference will be given to firms that have experience in these kinds of things that the ESC has been talking about. I think that that's a critical component of the RFP that we need to include. But mine is a, I guess, divergence from the ESC comments in general, we're just regarding the process in general. For those who were at the city council meeting last night, Councilman Z made some very important point, and that was, I would implore this student, or this school board and superintendent to meet the November 30th deadline. I think that it's very important that we get it right, but I also think that coming out of the gate, it's very important that we meet the first deadline because having spent the last five months campaigning and talking to what I feel like is everyone in this city, I can tell you that perception is very important, that the transparency is critical, but also the reputation of the school board and the superintendent is going to be critical to meeting these deadlines. So whatever we can do in the next 20, 48 hours to get that done, I would, again, implore this school board and superintendent to make sure that we meet that deadline. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And the final speaker slot that I have is for Mr. Eric Pelton.
Eric Pelton at 303 North Oak Street. I apologize in advance for some haphazard comments because this issue really just came to light in the last 24 hours or with the document being made public, and I'm appreciative of the discussion last night at city council and tonight here regarding the RFP. The central concern I have is whether or not this is merely a request for qualifications or whether or not it lays out a framework for the rest of the process. And while that framework can be adjusted, that framework and how it's set is very important. And in fact, the initial RFQ last go-around, two or so years ago, I believe, and, you know, was met with responses, and then there was dialogue and debate, and that's where the process terminated, if my recollection is correct. So clearly, what's in that RFQ must be important because it leads to those next steps that are even more critical decisions. Earlier, I think it was Mr. Lawrence noted whether the challenge is that there's perception here of a lack of transparency or that we're rushing. And I would say the perception could be that we're doing both, that there's not enough transparency and that we're rushing. I don't know what this November 30th deadline is. So I don't know where that deadline came from or why it's important. To me, it's very important that the community is engaged and understands what's going on here and that we don't rush and that we set up a framework that is transparent to the maximum extent allowed under the process. A few other thoughts, we have several new school board members here. I'm pleased that they're here, and I know some of them were at the city council meeting last night, and pleased to hear their comments. I hope that they've been involved in the process so far. The $108 million bar that's been set is a very important number. So while we're only looking at qualifications, it's been said, that number is extremely important, especially if we're going to come in at $120 million, and I appreciated Mr. Reitinger's thoughts on that. So I'd like to see more transparency. I think a lot of people in the community would like to achieve more transparency. I know it's a challenge. I'm not in the public procurement business, but I can imagine that there are a lot of challenges. I think, for example, we could set up public committees to get input on issues like environment, transportation, curriculum, athletics, arts, all of those things I hope are in the works. I wish they were in the works long ago. And, you know, I don't, I also didn't see any discussion of what the alternatives were to using the PPEA process. I believe there are other processes, and I imagine and hope that you all have had some of those discussions, what the alternatives are in the public discussion tonight. I didn't hear any real discussion of how, why those other processes weren't chosen. So those are just a few thoughts, and again, apologize for the haphazard nature of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments before we move forward? We'll move on to business action and information on the approval of the George Mason High School RFP. And before we, I just want to give another opportunity for questions or comments. Ms. Gill.
One short comment to Mr. Pelton's point. I do think that the need to communicate and over-communicate on every step in this process is going to be vital. So even though we all know that, you know, we're talking about just to request, just to request for qualifications, I think that, as Mr. Pelton pointed out, there is a perception in the community that we're rushing things and we're shoving things through. Even if that's not actually the case, people have perceived that to be the case. So just being really aware that we make sure that we're overly communicative at each phase and what's going to happen at each phase and every date that's coming up and how we got to that date, which I know is a lot of work for our team, but I think that it will pay off in dividends and trust with the community.
At the risk of sounding defensive, which I don't want to be in any of this, I would, one, I would say absolutely yes, I think we want to be as transparent as we can be in this process. We have had information about the November 30th date out for about six months since the bond referendum made the ballot that this was going to be the timeline. So every chance we've had on our public website and all of the community engagement processes that we've had, we've been talking about the state. And we backed that data from the 2021 opening of school, and this is the date that it needs to go out for us to meet that benchmark. So we'll continue to look for new and different ways to be communicative, but our website is thick. We've spent a lot of time in the community talking with people, particularly around the bond, and we'll just keep trying.
Yeah, no, so one suggestion I have is that with Mount Daniel, when, prior to the cease of construction, there were construction updates that went out really regularly and that, again, it's just over-communicating with parents. So we got a lot of information out, here's exactly what's going on, here are all the steps that are happening. So that could be a nice thing for the community, just a George Mason update, you know. We're approaching the November 30th deadline. As a reminder, that was set because that's the date we need to hit to get construction started by this date. Again, it's just an over-communication strategy.
And I would also invite the community to help us with that and overly engage, if you will, with our website. You know, the website that we're putting up that's going to have all of that information will be where we're going to drive people to if they have questions, so that they can see what's there, and hopefully that will resolve some of those issues. When I say overly communicate, I mean overly communicate with the website. Try to also run school. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, I'm also going to, I think, respond a little bit to Mr. Pelton's comments, which I agree with, we need to overly communicate, as Ms. Gill said. The thing I would note is that I actually didn't have a chance, because I was traveling the last couple of weeks, to read the document until it was made available to the public. So I'm working on a lot of the same bases that other people are. But I did read the document, and the only thing it asked for really is qualifications and other types of projects people have worked on. And, you know, there's no bidding on this, that, or the other thing. So it really is, although it's called an RFP, just an RFQ. And that's significantly different than what Phase 1 of the RFP was the last time we went through the PPEA. So, you know, yes, we stopped it after Phase 1, and I can guarantee you, a lot more came in under the process. We're using the same set of requirements, but it actually was a different design. So Phase 1 was more than an RFQ the last time we went through this. There will, as, I think there have been plenty of opportunities, there have been lots of opportunities for public comment, but we're going to have another year and a half of them, and we've just got to lean forward as hard as we can and not just, you know, expect people to come to us, but go out there, talk to people in the community, and actively solicit input, so we get the best school for the best price. I mean, I don't think you can, you could find anybody in the city who doesn't want a net zero school. And we already built in, when we did the feasibility study, lots of ideas around light and orienting the building for low use and geothermal and all those things. So that's all in the Perkinsman Study. But we're trying to balance a bunch of different things. That's the only thing I'd say about that. As we go into the next phase, we're going to have to balance, you know, what's a school that the city can afford and what returns the best value. To me, geothermal is obviously a slam dunk because it does reduce the burdens and it, you know, reduces the carbon footprint at the same time. But those are the sorts of things that we've got to go through, and as we go past this initial phase and go into the second phase, you know, we're going to want and need continuing public input about what those requirements actually ought to be. And then as we get into the negotiations, to the extent we can have everything in the public, we're going to want those to continue as well. So, you know, I get the caution, but I, you know, I do think, as I said once during the process long ago, we need to make haste slowly. And this is a, I think, I think Ms. Russell is quite right, that this is a point in time where we want to get this document out. We don't want to slow it down at the start, and so I'm comfortable in proceeding and just communicating as well as we can based on the document that's been presented to us.
Reverend Ray.
I just want to make a recommendation, and fortunately or unfortunately, I won't be here, but I'd implore my colleagues and the incoming crew to think long and hard about dedicating some resources to messaging, because, to put it very bluntly, we don't do a good job of it either on this side or on the general government side, you know, which is why we keep getting this. So if there's any way in the next budget, go around, some resources could be dedicated, and I mean money and potentially, I don't know if it's outsourced, whether it's part of the construction management piece, but a constant drumbeat of, here's what we're doing, and, you know, constantly putting the word out, whether it's weekly, just so we don't get this, because for a year and a half, we're going to get this perception of, you're not transparent. But again, it's on the website. I don't know how many of us go to the website to read it, but the message is out, I don't know if it's where we find it, how it's put out, but I think, think long and hard as a group about dedicating some resources to this. Dr. Noonan is right, he's got a school to run, he's got projects to build. Messaging thing is a whole new art on it, I mean, it's a whole new department. People do this for a living. So think about it, and hopefully somewhere in the budget, you could dedicate some resources to it, because it would really help everybody and the community as well. That's just my recommendation.
Thank you very much. Any other comments before we try and entertain a motion?
Well, I just say, the 62% that voted in favor of this, I think is also telling us we need to get cracking. You know, we've known for 60-plus years that George Mason would be 60-plus years old now, and I think we've done a good job of communicating. That doesn't mean we should stop. But I think the problem is, it's easy to communicate, but it's hard to reach everybody, and so it takes repeated efforts, and I think we should keep doing that. But Dr. Noonan, I think you've done a great job thus far, and again, if there's anything we can do to support you going forward, and I think you've got a great team backing you up as well, just please let us know and keep up the good work.
With that, I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I would go to board docs. I would move that the school board approve the George Mason High School RFP as presented.
Go second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Do we want to do roll call or just voice?
Question for clarification, Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Ray.
My, sorry, point of order, didn't we do an ad, so it's not as presented?
The point I was going to raise is, there was one change on that, and there were some other typographic changes, and I wonder if the motion should take that into account and say something like, you know, approve it in substance with the additional changes agreed to during the meeting and any additional non-substantive changes made for form as agreed to by the school staff.
I think that's the right, that's the right motion.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would then take that friendly amendment that we approve the George Mason High School RFP as presented, subject to the discussion items and corrections that were discussed this evening.
Ms. Ward, would you? Do we do, or was that the same thing?
No, no, that was the same thing.
All right. Ms. Goodell.
Mr. Ankuma.
Aye.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Gill.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Reitner.
Yes.
Ms. Warren.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Anything else for the good order before we adjourn? Just remember, this is a fun time. This is a great moment, so. Please stand adjourned.